... And maybe Lynn and Brandon, our student representatives, can lead us off.
(inaudible) (inaudible) To the flag, I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the first item on the agenda, is public comment and agenda requests. Is there anyone in the audience that has an agenda request to make or a comment? Or any, this is your opportunity to address the board. Okay. Seeing none, any board members have any comments they wish to make? This might be the time to share anything with, that might have happened at the school that you represented. Does Scott have something?
(inaudible) meeting in the open house that went very well. Has a lot of good fundraisers going on and it's gonna be a great year out there. And, and they all love the new principal.
Okay, very good. Congratulations to Don there. I was at the academic awards, I believe John was too, at the middle school. Would you like to say a few words about that, John?
Well, I think, again, always encouraged by the attendance that we get. Obviously, the freshmen weren't excited about coming back, but that's understandable. But I thought, you know, it was a big crowd and it was nice to see the accomplishments. The other thing I just wanted, I was at the Marshfield football game and I thought our team really played a great game. Unfortunately, came out on the short end of the score, but I was impressed with the level of play against, you know, obviously the defending state champs. They, I think they really had them worried for a while because they had a very good game. Congratulations again to our high school kids.
Thank you, John. Lynn?
I'm representative of Pine River and although I wasn't able to attend a PTO meeting on Monday, just wanted to thank the staff, especially Carla Schmidt, secretary, and principal, for allowing the Merrill Learning Connection. Once again, the community is using our school as well as the high school. So, the introduction to martial arts was, was fun and I participated in that, it was real interesting. And then, we have an astronomy class that will involve a lot of, involve a lot of field work, including using the pavilion. So, it's, it's really exciting to have schools being used by the community. Thank you.
I know Midway had a chili supper and I think Paul dished out some chili and I wasn't able to attend, but how did that go?
Well, it went great. We met over 200 people, so. And we had parent orientations up.
Anyone else? Brenda?
I'm with the high school group and we had a parent-teacher meeting, well, a communication meeting. And we discussed communicating and celebrating our achievements and also, we were just brainstorming some other ways that we can get information out to parents and students. And it was a real enthusiastic group.
Anyone else? Tom?
Washington also had a very successful parent meeting. I was not able to attend. I don't know if you wanted to comment a little bit on the meeting, but there were, I forget in your memo, there was a very good participation.
Circle, we're 375 kids and parents.
Wow.
Feed them and they will come.
Very impressive.
Good work. Obviously, food brings out, brings out problems.
Remember that, Brian.
1200.
Okay, anyone else? Right, and lastly, I am on the assets committee and help with Make a Difference Day and Linda Becker challenged me to challenge the board to sign up for Make a Difference Day and see if they can help out. On October 25th, if we could all get a group together, we could rate leave and it's lots of fun. And if there's extras, you can pass them out to the audience and anyone that can join us on the 25th, that would be great. If there are any other comments then, at this time, I will welcome our two student representatives to the first official meeting that they're attending this evening. Liz Imahin and Brandon Morazak. I'll hit the last name. The first couple of times, it's tough. We don't have their nameplates yet, but they will be coming. So, welcome this evening and you are more than welcome to participate in the discussions as we go on tonight. Just raise your hand to be recognized and welcome. Do you have anything to share about what's going on with the high school?
Well, mostly, everyone's getting ready for homecoming. A lot of organizations have had their first meetings this week to, just to start off the year. Oxford Club and FSA Student Council's been meeting for, although I'm tired to get everything ready, but most organizations are participating in homecoming. A lot of student organizations are doing window painting besides just the regular classes. And then, we started having large group meetings that involved representatives and advisor and a student representative from each organization, student organization, to talk about ways we can make our school better. So, the most topic now is homecoming and some ideas we had to make homecoming better. And a lot of organizations brought up some good ideas. And then, they also brought up an idea about getting the announcements onto MP3 and Brian could talk a little about that.
Well, what we're working on is having our in-house channel to have announcements that will be sent every day, but making the only announcement said would be calling people down to the office for notes and other business. So, when people are going through pods, they can just look up at the screen or during study halls and then during lunchtime, they can see the announcements. Otherwise, they don't hear it because other kids are talking in class here.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda then. Item D, starts with education reports and discussions and I believe we have a couple representatives from some trips that have gone on this, this past summer. The London trip, Gina, could you come up and share a little bit about your trip?
If I can hold this, there's an allocation with you here tonight. I don't, you can probably pack it around and the other store a little, it's a little bit awkward. But I wanted you to get an idea of what we did. Actually, that was a little awkward, too. You took 14 Merrill High School students in grades nine through 12, so they were a variety of grade levels and we had 14 of them and we took them all over Great Britain. We spent two days in London and then went up into Scotland area and the literary opportunities for students were just really a lot of fun and, and pretty amazing. We did a Dickens walking tour on the streets of London. We toured Sir Walter Scott's house. The kids loved all the stories and the books and it was just a very neat home. We went and saw Anne Hathaway's cottage and we went and toured the Birthplace of Shakespeare. We also saw a lot of historical sites and the kids all bought a new copy of Harry Potter. I was really excited about that. We had hoped that today we might be proposing a new trip at spring break, but we just didn't have the interest so soon again. We're, you'll probably see us back again next year, hoping for next summer.
Cool.
But the trip just went really well and we were really happy with it.
Any questions or comments for Gina? Thank you for putting in the efforts to take the students and it was a wonderful experience.
It was a great time.
Okay. Thanks. And then, we also had some Costa Rica volunteers or people that headed off there.
And I brought Costa Rica, too.
Great.
I will pass these around. I can leave them to a, turns them back to my school. We also went in June. We went in June as well, in fact, three or four days before the, we went to London. And ours was a home stay, so we went to San Jose, Costa Rica. The kids stayed with a family for the entire week and then every day, we met them and we did some touring. While we were doing our city tour of San Jose, we were right in the middle of the demonstration, the teacher demonstration. They had a national teacher strike while we were down there. And so, some of the students, David Kunkel and Kate Benfroton, were taking pictures like crazy and bringing back to show their parents about the strike that they were participating in, so that was pretty neat. We got to see two volcanoes and one of them was my first experience visiting it and that was the Poet, which we went to the top of and saw the crater and then the lagoon. And near there, there were some wonderful waterfalls and we visited a hummingbird and a butterfly garden, which was kind of neat for the students. We were in a cloud forest at the time. And then, we went to another volcano, but at the base of it and students swam in the hot springs and you could see that on one of the posters. So, we had the two extremes there. The kids had the opportunity to bargain in markets to eat the native foods and for some of them, the gallo pinto, which is mainly rice and black beans, was a totally new experience, especially the black beans, but they got through it. And we also had fried bananas, which are called platano, and that was another food that was new for most of them. The fact that they got to stay in their homes was an invaluable experience for them because they were treated like one of the family. And the families went out of their way to make sure that the kids had the opportunity to use the language completely. The younger children would like to use their English with our students, but the parents really made the effort to talk to the kids in Spanish. So, they, they had to use their language to survive and that was a neat part of it. All the kids, I think, had great memories. There's always a few complaints, but after we're home for two months or three months, all of a sudden, the complaints we had down there don't seem so great, you know, they're real trivial. And like Gina, we would like to thank you for allowing us to take the students on this trip. I've done this for many, many years and each time, it's a, it's a new experience because you're with a different group of kids and so it's, things are a little different. And we hope that next year, when we approach you, that you again will support our trip because right now, we're looking at travel again in the coming of 2005. So, any questions for me? Louise already phoned me, she wants an appointment with me so she can plan her trip to Costa Rica. So, if anyone else would like that, I'm willing to meet with you and give you some suggestions.
Do we have to take students alone?
No, no. You guys have fun.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for allowing the students to participate in those activities, both you and Gina. It's wonderful that, that you take the time and effort to give the kids these opportunities because they really are invaluable to get out of Merrill and kind of see all the wonderful different things that are going on. Thank you very much. If there's any other questions or comments, then we'll move into administrative reports. The first item under that is updates on board goals and in your packet, pages 15 through 30, you will see several administrative reports from all of the schools tying in the board goals and talking about how they're going to help implement and start working on the board goals and weave them into the school. We've not asked anyone to actually report on these this evening, but if anyone from the board has questions or comments on anything in the packet, there's certainly someone to ask now and if anyone's here or if you just want to make a comment about the goal. Lynn?
I really appreciated the format of tying in two goals, one, two, and three. It really helped. It kind of departmentalizes them and it really keeps it focused, so I appreciate it.
I thought it was very well done and it was. I think seeing everything you're doing, you're starting already to, to tie it to the, to the board, but we know for the book, so appreciate Sally's kind of spearheading that and the fact that everybody's working hard to do that. Thank you all for working to prepare those reports. Next then, we move into high school mission statement and culture, which begins on page 31 in your packet. And Brian, are you going to introduce some speakers?
Oh yeah, at this time, I would like to introduce two of our high school staff, Kathy Spencer and Jen Richardson, who will give a overview of what's been occurring through the summer and the school year and, come on, come here. I'll be at the window. Discuss some of the things, the mission statement, et cetera.
Great. I told him we couldn't talk. The last day of school in June, Brian put out a memo to all the staff to allow us the opportunity to get together and talk about school improvements. And so, we had over 40 people that attended that meeting and we had a discussion that centered around some of the problems that were occurring at the high school and we all felt the need that yes, we have to take the initiative to make some changes. So, first, we made a list of the positive things that were happening. You have this in your handout, so we're not going to talk about them because you probably have looked over them already. And as you can see, the list is quite extensive. And then, we looked at what are some areas that we need to improve upon and the ideas we generated are also included in your handout. And then, we looked at what are some characteristics of the, of the school and had a little discussion about that. And before the meeting was over, we felt we definitely need to meet again during the summer to try to do something with what we had done that day. So, Brian had all of those things typed up for us, mailed to us and we met again on August 7th. And at that time, we looked at a video, just part of a video, on creating successful schools. And one of the things that came out was the fact that we had to, or that successful schools have a common mission statement and we did not have one at the high school. So, we broke into groups and we created seven mission statements that day. You don't have that one because we consolidated it eventually into what you have in your packet. So then, a few weeks later, on August 25th, we met to, to write one common mission statement. And that took a long time because we had seven and we had lots of different ideas, but we finally narrowed it down to the one that you have, which consists of three sentences. And I have to put this in here because some people really had to, you know, go back on their ego and concede to the group and one of them was Jen Richardson. It took a lot of work, but we convinced him that maybe his ideas weren't always the best, right?
Well...
Can I continue? I'm done now.
The issue is over comma usage. That was the big sticker, comma usage in a series. And we, I heard it all out. I gave in on that, but I held out on preposition standing alone at the end of the sentence. I said absolutely not. I have my standards. Anyway, after we developed the, the mission statement, then we had the faculty as a whole come together, look at the mission statement. They were told about the process that generated that. And we had facilitators. We divided up the whole staff. We had facilitators who were on the original committees and they generated ideas about how do you go about implementing this mission statement? What are some things, some down-to-earth, practical kinds of things that we can do? And all of that, you have in your document, list and list and list of ideas and such that needed to be looked at, still need to be looked at, in fact. But it, it was a great experience. The facilitators got together after the meeting, decided that we need to keep going with this. And right now, what we have, we've divided it up into four areas. Student achievement, staff achievement, student environment, and staff environment as a way of dividing up the workload and eating things going. And we've already started on, on some of the things. One of the positive items that was done already this year, in fact, was done last year, two late group. They've been very energetic about getting us off to a good start. If you were at the football game last week, they had a tailgate party for the freshmen. Exciting things going on. We also, we want to do a student of the month by departments so that, you know, we give recognition to, to students on a regular basis and that way, we should be able to get more students to recognize. We felt that that was an important step in the process of creating a better environment. And another item that came up, Golden Apple Award. And this goes to a teacher or staff member each month. And last Thursday, or so, Brian gave out the first Golden Apple Award to Scott Arneson. And it was at a morning meeting, everybody was called in and Brian showed the apple and, you know, gave a little talk about the person who was receiving it and he had Scott come out and stand up on a chair so that Brian said, now I can really look up to. But the aftermath of that staff meeting, I don't think I've ever seen people come out of a staff meeting quite as happy and proud as what they were. And I think that's the start of really good things. Something about this Golden Apple Award, Brian gave it out the first time, now Scott has to decide on the next person to receive it. And it's like this each month throughout the year. So, we've got a lot of things that are happening that are just outstanding. I think we're off to a great start.
Could I ask you, Jim, to read the mission statement since it is wonderful? Everybody doesn't have it in their packet.
Oh.
So, could you, could you read that and then, and then maybe just touch on the, on the, right, that one?
Oh, okay.
That I'm talking about the audience and the MP3 people don't, don't know what you're talking about, so.
You have to imagine seven mission statements being consolidated and edited and everything to come up with this. We wanted to get it somewhat precise. The missions of Merrill High School is to provide a safe, caring, and respectful learning environment for students, staff, family, and community members. We believe that all students are capable of success relative to their individual needs and abilities as they develop skills to be responsible citizens and lifelong learners. We will work collaboratively to promote excellence, accountability, and high levels of achievement.
And then, after that, we've got the couple groups, even just the headings are good, increasing recognition of students. Would you mind just touching base with, you did give us some of the things, but just those main headings?
Yeah, increasing recognition of students, developing a positive learning environment for students and staff, developing a positive professional working environment, staff support, and developing positive and effective communication.
And it looks like a beautiful idea.
Larry was in charge of trying to bring all these ideas together and put them under some kind of headings. That was a task in itself. Larry was busy.
It looks like you generated lots of, lots of thought processes, so this is wonderful. Anyone on the board have comments or questions? Carrie?
That is wonderful.
Anyone else? I think Carrie said it all. Thank you so much for coming today. Thank you for starting this off and I hope it continues. Moving on to superintendent's report.
If you would look at the gray paper at your sheet, at your table tonight. As I indicated to you, I could not include the third Friday enrollment because it was last Friday. And literally was handed this at the end of today because the children are just getting their numbers in. So, just a couple of comments to it. If you will look at the second page and I will go across the bottom, you see the elementary totals are there? Okay? You'll see that generally, I'll just talk about patterns. Generally, Maple Grove is down, or I'm sorry, up since 2000, from 106 to 117. Midway, from 2, again, I'm speaking, all of this is from 2000 to 2003, was at 118 and now is at 86. Pine River, 133 to 127. Washington, 304 to 285. Scott, almost consistent, 98 to 99. Jefferson, 184 to 163, so it's quite a drop there this year from 187 last year. Kate, 408 to 439, which is up this year. Okay, so in total, also, if you correct on your papers, if you go across the total for 2001 on the elementary, that should be 1,338. It says 3577. 1,338. Okay? And then, for 2,000, if you make a correction of 6,913 to 1,351. And so, if you look at this another way, and again, because it's such new data, I don't have it as prepared for you as I would like to have, but if, I'm just going to read a couple of numbers out of this. This is the page that was in the budget book, if you remember, to give you some totals, to give you a feel where we, where we are at. If you go back to, if you go back to 98, 99, we had 3,456 kids. In 99, we had 3,428, so there was a difference of 28 kids down between those two years. If you go to 2,000, we dropped 55 kids, down to 3,373. If you go to 2001, we dropped another 48 students, down to 3,325. If you go to 2002, we dropped another 27, to 3,298. And right now, in the building, we dropped 40 this year. We're down to 3,258, but we have projected 3,200. So, we are down 40, but we are up from the projections. Okay, I have not, I have not had an opportunity to analyze it any deeper than that at this point in time. The only other thing that I'll point out on this sheet and of course, you know, at home with questions, if you have it, after you can take it home. If you go back to the middle school on the front page, you'll see from 2,000, there were 730 students and now it is at 739. Last year was 755, so it's down from last year a little bit, 14 if exact, or I'm sorry, 16. If you go to the high school on the second page, you can see that in 2,000, it was 1,257 students and now we're down to 1,175. As I said, no more, I haven't done any more analysis than that, but we'll be doing that and using it more as we get into some of the budgeting. Okay? Any questions? Okay, the next one then, on the Spanish language program, if you turn to page 49 in your packet, please, is a letter from Gary Samansky from Black River Falls. A letter complimenting our Spanish department and he had the opportunity to bring his nephew, Ben Samansky, with him on a trip to Mexico City this past year. He was extremely impressed with the amount of Spanish that Ben could use, so wanted to commend our Spanish program in public in front of you and MP3. And, and, there you go. Thank you. In this booklet that I'll pass around, this is the 2003 Fall Conference for Wisconsin Association of, WSCV, I almost forget what it stands for. And Don's looking at me like, oh, she should know that off the top of her head. But anyways, it's for curriculum development and so, I'll get out of it that way. So, anyway, I did mark the pages and you'll see in this little booklet, we are referenced on three pages. That's our representation for the state conference. Don is the president of this organization this year and it's Wisconsin Association for Supervisional Curriculum Development. And also, we have some presentations by individuals in our school district. Our Palms Program, Personalized Accelerated Learning Model, that will be by Michelle Yonkey and Jen Portman. We also have, so, they want me to be an instructional leader, now what? And Don will be presenting that along with the El Brook Director of Instruction. And then also, and this is at the same time, and they were challenging me today, which one I'm going to go observe, Improving Student Learning by Redesigning the Educator Evaluation System. And that's by Karen Held and Beth Tepper. So, we are well represented and so I wanted to share this with you and we'll work it around, around you. Okay? And last but not least, pages 50 and 51 in your packet. One of the things that you shared with me in our retreat that we had right after I came here in July was to have, you wanted a better understanding of administrative duties and what individuals are doing. The other thing in health is I would ask, who's responsible for what? We put this together. This is by no means an all-encompassing list. The principals' duties that are on here are beyond the normal principal duties, you know, other district-wide responsibilities they have. So... So we will be taking a look at this for next year, and we might be doing, be doing some rearranging. I will say to you and everyone else in the room, as I've been here now, going in three months, that a lot of people, my understanding is people think that we are overstaffed administratively. Some of it may be in what we define as an administrator in the district, other things. But as I've seen in the workload that has to be done, we are certainly not overstaffed in what we have to get accomplished. So I want to share that with you now, and I will continue to share that with you and watch it more closely. Not more closely, I've been watching already, but I will continue to monitor it and, and give you more feedback as the months go on. Because we may do, I believe, we may have to do some shuffling and redesigning how we're going to set this up to get the best we can. So that hopefully will also, it's a resource that we handed out to everyone in the district too. So if they want to contact anyone, if they have a program issue or they have a question, they know which administrator to go to. Okay?
Any other questions? I'm Sally. Okay.
Thank you.
You done?
Yep.
All right, then moving on to old business, we have none this evening. New business, first item under new business is minutes. We have minutes of August 20th, the regular board meeting. August 25th, the special board meeting. They should be listed right after in the agenda on the right side, pages one, two, and three. And after that, there's a single page of August 25th minutes. I believe Brenda was the only one absent on August 25th. Otherwise, everyone is present for the other meeting. There was one piece I noted on the, on the minutes for August 20th on page three. I believe the motion under approval of district goals was approved, but it looks like the first motion that piece got taken off the minutes. I think it should say unanimously approved after that line as well. That's the only correction I saw. Are there any other corrections or additions for the minutes of August 20th? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 20th and August 25th? Louise?
I have someone.
Do I have a second? Kurt?
I have a second.
Any other corrections, additions, or comments on the minute? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Brenda, on August 20th? Thank you, those minutes are approved. Claims and vouchers. Moving on to the dynamic team of Tom Muller and Colin Emaier, who are approving the vouchers lately. Colin's name seems to have been stuck on the agenda for a couple, a couple of months though.
He's really getting good at it.
Tom?
I would move to approve claims and vouchers dated 8/13/03 to 9/24/03 inclusive.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any other comments, Tom?
Other than it's beginning the year, there's a tremendous amount of expense involved in getting the, getting the school moving again. Pat was able to explain and interpret all of the voucher items for us, so we certainly appreciate your efforts to do that.
Anything for you, Paul? Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none? I vote to approve the vouchers. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining?
I abstain from voucher 66390.
Tom, 66390, and Brenda?
439784 and 43975.
705.
85.
85. I'll just give our secretary a duo a moment to catch it. We have a secretary in training tonight, and we have a substitute secretary, so we're double teaming. Okay. Vouchers are approved. Moving on to retirements and resignations. We have none of the retirements this evening, I believe.
Resignation?
Resignation.
I would ask that the board consider the resignation of Fran Renn from, her assignment at high school, special education teacher. Fran has, I believe, her letter is in your packet, she has accepted the position of a district. We had told her originally that we would hold her to her contract until we found a suitable replacement. Then we have found a suitable replacement. So I would like the board to consider accepting her resignation as of October 3rd.
As of October 3rd?
Yes.
Lynn?
Would you comment on her letter and the request for a waiver of the, you know, the late notice? Would you comment on that, please?
That's a union issue.
Yeah.
It should be dealt with in the personnel manner.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, or Paul, about this resignation? Seeing none? Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Fran Renn as of August, what? As of October 3rd?
I move to accept the resignation of Fran Renn dated October 3rd.
Do I have a second to that motion? Brenda?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion, Lynn?
So are we, so are we voting on the motion as presented in the letter, or are we voting on the acceptance of the resignation?
Voting, Matt. You're voting on my recommendation that we accept the resignation, not the contents of her letter.
Not the request?
I, I didn't understand.
Okay.
No question.
Thank you for clarifying that. It is simply the resignation. Not a request for the abatement of the penalty. Is everyone clear on that? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of accepting the resignation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. Thank you, Paul. That's approved. Moving on, I think we're on page 53, and also a blue handout that Paul had submitted the other night. There's a blue paper that was in your envelope.
Right, I'm the, I'm the referencing the blue primarily, if that's okay with the board. And I'll just go down the list.
If I can just tell you that, the blue is just an updated version of the yellow. Okay, so there's, there's nothing replaced, it's just an updated, so it's not, you can trust that it's the same, but just with some updated information, more current.
Yes. We've been very busy this year. The, the first recommendation I, I make tonight is that we employ Paul Strand on a regular contract, as listed on page 55. With the waiver policy of 4110, which is listed on page 54, there are only two applicants for the position. So my recommendation is that we employ Paul Strand as stated on page 55.
Would you like me to move on these individually, Paul?
It's not necessary.
Okay.
I, I would recommend that you do them together, and if someone wants to pull one out, to feel free to do that. But otherwise, there's no reason to have to do it separately.
Okay. Proceed.
Second one is Washington Sage Grade 2. I employ, I recommend that we employ Becky Nass, as listed on page 56, on a regular contract for Washington Sage Grade 2. And then the final teacher one, I believe, we'll, we'll package the teachers with the high school special education. I recommend that we employ Dixie Erickson. And that one is attached, the blue sheet, on a regular contract. Just do the teachers at this?
Sure. People, they're all, they're all contracted.
We'll do all of them. The next one is superintendent secretary. Again, this is an addition to the last letter that I sent. Interviews are held on September 15th for the superintendent secretary, and I recommend that Aunt Feeny be transferred from her position at the middle school. Okay? High school English, we attempted to have a recommendation for you at this time. We held interviews on September 5th and September 9th to find a qualified candidate for the English position. And the committee that we had recommended that none of the candidates that we interviewed, they felt were qualified. So we decided to just go with the long-term sub in that position, and we will repost it. So there is no recommendation for high school English at this time.
And you'll be reposting it?
Probably reposting it early November to get the summer graduates. And then new that we're starting now is that I'll be bringing recommendations for support staff employment. And so there's two positions at this time that I'd like the board to consider. One, a 60% teaching assistant at Head Start, so this will be a regular education aide. And that's Amy Hanlon. And the second one is alternative education aide at the high school, three-hour aide. This one is funded by a grant, and it will be a regular education aide, and that person is Jane Thiel.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Any comments or questions? Lynn?
On the high school special ed licensure issue, what's the plan for that?
Mrs. Erickson is, will be certified. She, she feels her certification will be in November, so probably get her certification. But in the meantime, we'll have a, where is she licensed to carry her from her point of hire until when she receives her certification?
My other question was on Jane Thiel's position. Is that a similar grant that is funding Mrs. Farady? And will the hours, how, what are the three hours? And how will her aide position be utilized?
Yeah, right.
The afternoon from 3:00 to 6:00.
She will be helping, she will be supporting that after-school program. Thank you.
Louise?
The, the 60% teaching assistant, is that a new thing or is that a replacement?
That's a, that's a replacement. The person who was in that position went to a full-time position with the Head Start. And that's a, I call it a teaching assistant, but I should have called it a regular education aide.
Sal?
The, I just, so that you understand, you have not in the past approved, or positions, support staff positions have not been brought to you. I believe they should be. Okay, that's why they are being brought. If, these are current positions that were vacant, or we were monitoring if we needed them right up to the start of the school year. Okay? If you, in the future, if there's a new position, you will be asked to create that position before then we will, you know, bring you the person in it. So anything like this, it is an existing position that we are filling. Okay?
Brenda?
Did we post an interview for that Washington Sage position in the special ed? At high school? Or did?
Yeah. Yeah, by contract, we have to post those positions within. But we also, we had done a Sage posting outside the district, in Illinois Elmar regular contracts, and also a high school special ed.
Tom, did you want to make any comments?
Well, I just wanted to mention that I think we're very lucky, and hopefully we will approve contract for Dixie Erickson. She had been a teacher at Lincoln Hills School and an excellent teacher. Unfortunately, due to the state's budget situation, she was a victim of a layoff. And as in our district, it's purely a matter of seniority. Some very qualified teachers have, have been affected by that. So I think Lincoln Hills' loss will be MAPS gained. An excellent teacher.
Any other questions on, on the list? Everyone's clear on that? And we'll be looking for a motion to approve the hiring of Paul Strand, Becky Nass, Dixie Erickson, Aunt Feeny, Amy Hanlon, and Jane Thiel in the positions as stated. Do I have a motion to that effect? John?
I move to approve the hiring and the contracts as stated.
Do I have a second to that? Carrie?
I will second that.
Any comments, John? Carrie? Anyone else wish to make, make comments or have questions? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much, Paul. Thank you. That is carried, and those people are joining our staff. Moving on, ratification of the 2001, 2003 Merrill Education Support Professional Association contract.
On pages 57 and through 60 are the recommended changes for the MASP contract. This is for, as Ms. Berg indicated, the 2001, 2003 agreement. The MASP, the support staff union has already ratified this contract, and therefore I recommend that the board ratify it. You haven't had an option, you have had the, the, option.
Opportunity. It was an old word. Thank you.
You have had the opportunity to review the changes and the money package, so I recommend approval.
Okay. Yes, Paul?
Just, just one quick clarification, and it's the one that's dated, that I put today's date on, those, those changes that I passed out earlier tonight, the ones that are dated.
Your handout.
My handout from tonight would be the one for the record.
Okay.
Nine, I think I put 9/20.
9/23.
Yes.
Okay. Lynn?
Move approval of the rep, of the 2001, 2003 Merrill Education Support Professional Association contract dated September 23rd, 2001.
Do I have a second to that motion? Tom?
Second that motion?
Lynn, here we come. Tom?
One pen coming. I could.
Just for the record, so everyone's clear, this is the contract that ended in?
July of '03.
Of '03.
June of '03.
June of '03.
June of '03, excuse me.
So we're all happy to put this contract to rest. Are there any other comments or discussion on the contract? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Curtis abstaining. Thank you, that motion carries. Thank you, Paul, for all your hard work, and Pat, and Sarah, and everyone who's, and the MASP leadership, and everyone who's worked long and hard on this. Nice to have that done.
Custodial negotiations with next.
We are fortunate to bring you in another package that has been completed for the custodians in the school district. This is for 2003, 2005. So we are, would be done, finished with that contract now moving forward for two years. You have had an opportunity to review the language changes and the dollar value that you have directed us to, to use. And so therefore, I recommend approval. And the custodial union has ratified this already.
Do I have a motion to approve the custodial contract? John?
I just that be approved with custodial.
Do I have a second to that motion? Kurt?
I'll second.
Any other comments, John? Kurt?
It's good to see we're ahead of the ballpark.
This is the first group to set up for this coming year, so hopefully that will start the ball rolling. Sal?
One comment that I think is appropriate is to let everyone know that beyond the administrative staff and non-representative places, this is the first union to go to the point of service on health insurance and also go to the three-tiered drug card. And so we'll be using that and hoping that we can have more of the unions participate in that down the road.
Any other discussion, comments, or questions on the custodial contract? Seeing none, we will be voting to approve the agreement for the custodians for the 2003, 2005 school year. Sal?
I have to make one last comment. Even though we haven't gone through all of the details of these two contracts, more than willing to, in the community, if anyone has particular questions, to be glad to respond to any of that.
Everyone ready to vote then? We're voting on approval of the custodial contract for '03, '05. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you, that motion carries, and that contract is ratified. Thank you again for everyone's hard work on that. Coming up next, short-term borrowing. I believe there's a brown handout in front of you.
It's called FAWK.
FAWK.
It's called FAWK.
FAWK.
Five minutes.
I received bids this morning for our, our annual cash flow borrowing. I would move to be pledged this year in contrast to three dollars here. The winning bid, I would recommend would be bid from Robert from the fair. Our net effective interest rate is 1.274% for that borrowing. In contrast, I wrote there that we paid almost 3% two years ago. Last year was over 1.5%. This borrowing is, is bid by a number of bidders from throughout the country. This borrowing is, is bid by a number of bidders from throughout the country. We get, two of the bids are from the East Coast, and one of them has won, but won the bid last year actually, but did not get it this year. As our fund balance increases, our bond rating looks better, our borrowing gets better of interest rate. So that's a factor to consider. So that's where we are. I'm asking for a resolution to authorize the borrowing of $4.75 million of Robert W. Beard for the, I think I'll say tax and revenue anticipatory, some certain amounts.
Okay. Did I read that correctly? Last year we borrowed $5 million, so we're down a little bit. Correct? Are there any questions or discussion or, Sal?
One comment, if you look at the third paragraph on Pat's notes above, the first sentence, and if you remember what I presented to you at the annual meeting, talking about bond ratings and fund balance, you see that as Pat was doing this today, with the bids just coming in today, while she was talking to the bidders, she learned that another Wisconsin school district even yesterday, who had a higher bond rating than us, received an interest rate of 1.15. So you can, I want to make sure that you understand the difference of how that can affect what we could obtain. So long-range goals and how we look ahead and what we want to accomplish financially.
Thank you. Lynn.
I've asked this before and I've forgotten the answer. How long do we borrow this money?
Four. Four, it's one year.
It's one year.
Uh-huh.
And we pay it off when we receive our funding from state and federal, or during the year as the taxes come in. That's support education.
It's paid along some of the numbers back here.
If you refer back to your yellow document and you look at number seven, we told you that we'd be giving you the exact rates on there, but the second sentence of, yeah, second, I'm sorry, third sentence, the 2002-3 borrowing of $5 million will be paid on September 30th, 2003.
From last year.
Right. Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? We're deciding whether we wish to make a motion to approve the bid of Robert W. Beard at 1.274%. Louise.
I move that we approve the bid of Robert W. Beard. He makes $4.75 million.
Do I have a second to that motion? Colin. Any other discussion?
I think two years ago, it was even $6 million. So the amount of money that we're needing to borrow has, has gone down. It's still a lot of money, but it's, it's going down. And the sad thing about the whole process is the money we pay in interest, that we're forced to pay in interest because we could fund a couple positions. So it's unfortunate that this can happen.
Colin, any other comments? Anyone else? Any discussion, comments, or questions? Seeing none, we will vote to accept the bid of Robert W. Beard for borrowing of $4.75 million. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion is carried. Thank you very much, Pat. And you all. The next item on the agenda, one we've not seen here in Merrill before, but it's a request from a veteran for a diploma. Sal.
Mr. Breitenbach has made a request to be awarded a Merrill High School diploma based on the Wisconsin Statute 12013, Grant 37. I have dealt with this before in my career. It is statute that came into place several years ago that afforded veterans who met a number of criteria, the opportunity to request a diploma from the school that they left to enter into a conflict. And that conflict is a definition that is a statute, and that's why I use that term. So we have followed up on that. Mr. Breitenbach does meet the criteria, and we did have an opportunity in closed session for the board meeting to ask any pertinent data regarding his military career that would have been in closed session, so therefore I recommend approval at this time.
I move approval of granting Mr. Breitenbach his high school diploma. And it's a special honor for me because my husband's uncle died in Korea at 19. So I appreciate Mr. Breitenbach's service to our.
Do I have a second to that motion? Louise.
I would like to second it.
Any other comments, Lynn? Louise.
No. It does make me think, though, about how rapidly our, the whole situation of our education My father got his GED when he was 70-plus years old, because he didn't have the opportunity either. So I think this is really a good opportunity for us to be able to grant him a diploma because he, he earned it by his service.
I think it's awesome that somebody over 65 cared enough to want this one. So.
Both Brian, Duran, and I have had conversations with him on the phone, so he's really looking forward to this.
Brenda.
Come to a board meeting and.
Well, it's quite a trip for him, so. I did invite him.
Yeah, it's too bad we can't do this person. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of granting a diploma to Mr. Breitenbach signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you, that motion carries. I'm sure he'll have the opportunity to see that information. The next item on the agenda was the London field trip request, and as Gina indicated earlier, there has not been enough student interest at this point in time to do a trip this next year. So they are going to hold off and not have a trip and look at possibly offering them in the following years. So we will not be taking any action on that request. Moving on to number 10, additional social worker contract time. I believe that starts on page 69 in your packet.
Right. On page 69 is a recommendation from John Greenwood to increase Motegat's social service time for the district from 70% to 80%. This addition will be paid totally through federal funds that we have available to us. And also, the purpose of this increase is to provide additional organizational leadership for Washington Schools Lighted Schoolhouse. Therefore, I recommend approval.
Are there any questions or discussion on this request? Or does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the request to increase the time from 70 to 80%?
We'd move to approve the motion and increase her time from 70 to 80% based on the fact that it will be paid for by grant money available to us.
Do I have a second, John?
Second.
Any other discussion, Tom?
No. Glad we could do this.
John. Anyone else have any questions? Louise.
Could you summarize the light at school project?
Karen.
Karen. Yes?
We're interested in the light at schoolhouse project. Could you summarize that?
We bet. We are planning a monthly meeting similar to our parent orientation night, where we would have a meal. We are, Rich and I are just calculating today our K through three population, we're up to 52% free reuse lunch. So seriously, feed them and they will come. So we will have a meal. We're working with Family Resource Center to provide some educational programming. Also, staff members will be doing that. There will be activities for the children, so this is, we say, as Mona says, that all parents must be chaperoned by their children to come, so it's not just drop off your kids and leave. And then we end, after the activities are going on for family, for the, for the children and for the parents, then we end the night with a storytelling time, and we have a community member come in and do some storytelling, kind of like bedtime thing, and then we send them home. So it'll be five to seven, and we pick, I believe it's the second Monday of the month, except for April, when we have vacations and breaks in there.
Great.
And Mona is just awesome to work with. She is just, if you know Mona, she's just fired up all the time, and she's just great, so.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Karen? Thank you, Karen. Anyone else have any other questions or discussion on this request? There are none, and I will be voting on adding additional time from 70 to 80% for Mona Beard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much. That motion carries.
The timeframe, if you, if you refer to, on page 70, you'll see the timeframe process in the center of that page. There are two ways to look at evaluations of administrators, and I've mentioned this to you before, that you can use a year that is pretty much the school year, from July 1 until June 30th, that fiscal year. Or you could look at the calendar year, from January 1 to December 31st. I prefer to use the school year, the July 1 to June 30th, because to me, it goes along, your goal setting and everything goes along with the process of your school year. And so if you see the process of, that mid-year evaluations completed, you know, mid-December, and mid-year performance, self-evaluation completed by December 15th, and mid-year performance conferences completed by January 15th, that will tie into the statutory guidelines of making recommendations for continuing contracts.
Any one else have any discussion or comments?
What will happen to the document that, that was made, or that, that had been worked on in the district last year?
It is, it's a document that is in, as I was going to say, transition, or it is being worked on. It is not a final document. So we will continue to review that and then decide a balance and bring, bring that back a year from now, whatever is appropriate.
I think it's, it's really a good thing that you want to do all of those evaluations this year. And in order to get that done, I think you need to use a format that you're familiar with, so I think it's a good idea.
One thing with the other document that's been worked on, it's based on state standards for administrators and all that, which this does include them, but not as formally as that one does. But the other one is, is goal setting, and then what happens with the goal setting. This gets at some of the other characteristics of administrators and will promote that discussion. And so it goes at it a little different way. You still do the goal, do the goal setting and all that, but it'll promote that other discussion also, beyond the goals.
Any other questions or discussion? Appreciate you getting this in place as quickly as you have. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. Thanks very much. And we move on to natural gas usage update. Is Greg going to be in here for that?
I hope so.
We do have a document from Greg in our packet, and it is on page 83 to 85. Look at that.
Backing is on. You're good, Greg.
Thank you.
We're, we're already up to natural gas update, Greg, so we just wanted you to.
Pat, why don't you give him your pages?
Are you getting ready to retire or something, Greg?
Oh, thank you.
Page 83 through 85, Greg. We just wondered if you might help us interpret your, your spreadsheet and talk a little bit about how we're doing.
Okay. That spreadsheet came from Wisconsin Public Service, Energy Services, and it's a record of what we have done since we took, or since we started buying natural gas. I think my narrative, if I remember right, talks about the fact that we actually lost money the first year because the winter was so warm and the natural gas prices were high in the summer, a little higher in the summer than they were in the spring, when we started really not needing it because of the warm weather. So the demand was, was low and the price was high. But over the period of two years, we have saved $6,828 on this operation. That was really, that was really an anomaly the first year. It was really crazy. That doesn't happen. If, if you look at the 10-year history of buying natural gas through this process, it's, it's saved quite a bit of money for a lot of people. We just happened to get into that at a real crazy time. We're right now looking at about $5 gas. We'll probably never see $2 or $3 gas again. But I feel pertinent as to what she has to do. We actually get notified by email, by a phone call, and fax, all three methods, and somebody absolutely has to talk to a person for us to make a decision on buying natural gas over a long period of time. If it comes down to four and a half bucks or somewhere around there, they'll probably make a three or four-year buying decision again. And we'll need to make that decision. I told Pat that, I made Pat the point person to receive that kind of communication, and that happens, I'll get re-involved whether I'm here or not, and I'll help Pat make that decision.
Since we've got two new board members, could you just real briefly kind of talk about how we, how we got into this?
Okay. We used to buy gas, just like you buy gas for your home, on a every-month basis and buy it directly from the utility. Now we buy gas from a third party, even though it's called WPS Energy Services. It's not really WPS. It's not that company that we bought gas from before. We could have bought it from anybody. Any of you can buy gas and resell it. But we chose a very stable company with a good reputation, which was WPS Energy Services, by commodity gas. So we buy our gas for the winter at the best possible time of the year. It may be June, it may be August, it may be January, we don't really know, but we buy it at the best possible time of the year. And we actually do it with a computer hedge model that looks at the historic reduction in gas prices, the historic growth in gas prices, where we are now, and what is the best time to buy. Then we make our human decision, but we use computer-generated information to make that human decision.
And, and right now, we're doing okay. We're, we're a little ahead of the game.
Right now, we're a little ahead of the game, and we, you know, had it not been for that anomaly the first year, we probably would be way ahead of the game. So my prediction is in five years, we'll be way ahead of the game.
Tom.
Two things. First of all, thank you for getting the data. I think I was one of the people who was interested in this because we had sort of entered into this agreement, so thank you very much for getting all this together. I appreciate that. Second of all, even though we haven't made a fortune, to me, one of the real advantages of this, if you look on page 84, the second last column for the right there, well, politics and economic situations often get goofy. And if you look at March of 2003, you see how goofy they can get. And suddenly, the price of gas spikes incredibly high. And, and the nice thing about this is at least the school district has some notion of what their energy costs are going to be generally. You don't know how much gas, but at least there's some general idea of what it's going to be, and no tremendous surprises, like going from $6.20 to $9.76 per unit in one month's time. So I really think this is a good thing for the district, and hope we can continue to use this, if nothing else, for the, the sense of predictability that it gives us.
I would agree. Even if we don't save money, we know what it's going to cost us for a year, and there are no surprises.
Any other discussion or questions? For Greg. This was just on the agenda as an update, although there is no action. You can go back to vacuuming, Greg. Thank you. Okay. Long-range planning is the next item on the agenda, and your packet's on page 86 through 88. We find a framework put together by Sally.
Related to Board Goal 3, with the short timeline that we have, to accomplish this before the end of December, so that we can use the information in our budget funding after the first of the year, as, you know, we'll have to deal with some budget cuts because of declining enrollment and the way the budget, or state finances education. So with that, I can go through any of the points on it. The first part, you can see I've made a list of items that I've asked individuals to start putting together. best way that we can use that data. There are two needs that I am proposing that we start with automatically in this. To me, these aren't open for discussion, if you want to put it that way. They are key things that have to be part of this. And that is in enhancing increasing student achievement, that's what we're about, and then also meeting more of our needs of our at-risk population in our school district. And so those two, to me, are on the table, need to be on the table, need to be there to start with, and then from there, we refine the other priorities. We have already started, John Grebel, I'm sorry, John Greenwood has started, that's a typo on my part, has started interviews of students who have dropped out and to gain some qualitative data. And so is doing some actual interviews with them, and that's in the works already, which I have some of that already next week. We have done some preliminary scheduling of the municipal meetings that you'll hear more about in the PR committee update, too. But to get out and meet people and go to the municipal meetings around our school district and ask the three questions that I had there, and those can be refined. I mean, again, it's a proposal this time, but what are you most proud of about MAPS? What are you most concerned about regarding MAPS? And what do you believe needs immediate attention regarding MAPS? And we even did some refining of that in the PR committee. Also, again, back to the data, compiling all of that. We have to also, we should look at reviewing the historical data that's been gathered. I was told about a process that was called D E R, Declining Enrollment and Revenue Team Recommendations. I do have that already available. Also, there's Egos, one, Egos, I guess is the way you, the academic news, educational growth of students. And then there was a survey done last year of the community, so we will also factor that in. I'm proposing right now, in the discussions I had with a consultant that would assist us, and some of you did attend a meeting at CISA nine in May, I think it was, even before I was here, we went to that, if I was officially here, and got some guidance on ways that we can help to pull together this type of information and refine it in a short time. And so with that, we talked about ways that we could bring the community in and a way we could start doing this. So looking at possibly, or probably, an evening with an open invitation to the community. We'd do a lot of promotion and inviting and whatever, so it'd be more complex than just making that statement, but we would refine that. I did mention assistance from the consultant, who would also train some individuals internally to help us synthesize the data. And then he would officially conduct the community listening session. If you remember, one of the things, those of you who attended that day, that he said it's key that the superintendent doesn't do that, and I need to be part of the process. And then also, as I indicated in the front end, we need to synthesize this and accomplish it by the end of December. I will, the last sentence that I put there, you can change that to three to four thousand, with some refining I've done with the consultant since I sent this out to you. We're looking at teaming up, or he's looking at teaming up with another district, so we'd save some mileage and that type of thing. So, and also, we, a lot, most of this would be funded through some grants that we have, some ways that we can do that. So I'm looking, if you are comfortable with this, or give me direction, I'll move forward from here and then find it.
Okay. And again, this is a framework that, just kind of an outline that you're going to be working on following our board goal. Discussion, question, related to the... Lynn?
I'm excited to see some of this data, especially as it relates to history. And I can't help but think House's piece in here is going to help with that GAZB costing that we have to go to in accounting and history of our buildings and the cost. So I think it's exciting. I'm especially interested in Brian's research on academic and co-curricular offerings. I think that's going to be a very valuable history lesson for all of us.
I think that's probably the key word.
Tom?
Oh, and so have you done it?
Yes, I'm done.
I saw that we're going to try to get all this together by the end of December. In terms of just kind of a timeframe for a community meeting, did you have a notion of about when that would fit in and still be able to get everything done by December?
I would say end of November.
Oh, okay.
That's as close as I'm, I haven't picked a date or...
Yeah, right after the end.
Yeah, it won't be during deer hunting. That's a discussion I've already had. That's all, that's all. I understand that. And it won't be by Christmas, so...
Anyone else? Colin?
Just, this is great to see this, and I would encourage any community members that have questions on what the process involves to give a call, because it's really good to see that we're going to do some of this research and finally get down to what we need to to figure out how we're going to cut our budget.
It won't be simple.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Brenda? I never know where to drop this in, but yes, we need to meet the risk, meet more at-risk students, but I also, I hope on the increasing student achievement umbrella, that we look at where our bar is for our average and college-bound students to keep our district attractive and competitive with other districts in the area, so we're a viable choice when people look at where to settle and raise their families.
Thank you totally.
Anyone else? There is no more discussion. I'm looking for a motion to approve or endorse the framework to refine the budget planning process.
I'll make that motion.
Colin? Do I have a second? Brenda? Any other comments, Colin?
No, just wholeheartedly make that motion.
Brenda? Anyone else? Any further discussion? I think it is good that we're starting out with a game plan and we're looking at some basic data that should help us make more well-informed choices. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you very much then. Carries. And we are on to virus and filtering software. You did have a piece on page eighty-nine from John Grebel related to some virus software and purchasing licenses from Norton.
We have a need to update and upgrade our virus and spam software. Symantec is where it would be purchased from, or is the company that we've been using. And they are offering to give us the updates at twenty dollars per machine rather than the thirty-five dollars as listed in your notes. We have a need for eight hundred licenses to accomplish what we need. This is vital to going to help us to keep our system going. As you all know, I don't have to explain anything what the viruses can do today. This also will centralize the way this will be dealt with. The term council in here will help, this will change in the way it has been done from machine to machine to machine that has to be dealt with, and it will centralize the way we're doing it. And we have to look at some other things, too, and centralize it to help us be more efficient, at least from my perspective. So with that, I do endorse, I do recommend to you to approve this purchase order of, to purchase the eight hundred licenses for the software.
Any questions or discussion? I noticed that we've been able to get this at twenty dollars a machine versus thirty-five, so that's a plus. I'm betting I've done it. No questions?
Louise?
I move approval of this upgrade.
Second. Tom? No? Second, first. First to second. Lynn?
I'm second.
Louise? Any more comment?
It's spending a lot of money, but you can't live with a virus in the machine. So we have to get the hardware protected.
Lynn? Anything? No. Tom?
Trying to remember the policy, and I should recall, and I don't, in terms of what level do we need to have some kind of a competitive bidding process? Is it fifteen thousand dollars?
Fifteen.
Okay, this is at around sixteen. Do we need to do anything in terms of looking elsewhere, or is there, based on our policy?
John, is there any other company that's able to provide this for us that you know of?
We could bid it, of course, but what I've been trying to do with software is to single-source it from a major company. The company that we are using is called CDWG. They just, in fact, bought a couple other companies because they are one of the major ones. By single-sourcing our software, we have less of a license problem, which is what we've experienced in the past. And then the only other, you know, I'm never sure, because each one of these is an individual license, it's really twenty dollars, I'm asking for eight hundred and twenty dollars. But I would do whatever the board wishes.
Sally?
CDW is one that I've used for years and years, and I'm very comfortable with. That is a good price and a quality place to be. And some of the things, if we, I appreciate what you're bringing up, and I wasn't aware of that, you don't say that, but on the flip side, I'm very comfortable that, like I said, CDW is reputable and will help us and be good for us. And also, some of these things, if you get too disjointed, you create other problems that cost you a lot of money other ways. And so I do recommend this.
I think we've been hit by a couple viruses over about the past six months or a year, so your virus software is only as good as the subscription you have to keep it up to do. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, then we have a motion to approve eight hundred licenses at twenty dollars a license for sixteen thousand dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? I'm still doing stuff. Did you have a question? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, John. Purchase new truck with plow is an additional item, and it's on the green sheets we got on our envelopes last night. You brought those along with you. We wrote a memo from Brian Plow. Have you read that, Greg? Can you give us a little discussion on it?
All of the board may or may not know that we do all of our in-town plowing, and some of our close-to-town plowing, we don't necessarily plow near, or, if we grow, we have somebody else do that. But we do, with internal staff, a lot of plowing. And we have four, I believe, pickup trucks and four vans, and we need, and a food van that we just replaced last year, if you remember that. And we need to upgrade the fleet every year a little bit, otherwise we get very old. And I asked Brian to put together a set of specs for a plow truck and bid them to all the local car dealers. That's always been the tradition here, is to be good to all three local or all four local, depending on where there are car dealers, and we don't go out of town. As you can see, we're replacing a nineteen ninety-four, much smaller truck to do a better job of plowing, so this is the best price we got.
And that price is twenty-four thousand five twenty-five from Brickner's Park City. Any questions or discussion on the vehicle and the plow?
On the bid, I read about the difference if you had a wider plow blade. What, you know, do you decide that this is adequate?
I'll talk to Brian about that. It's only two hundred and twenty dollars. I haven't talked to him about that yet.
What's the, is, did he get the specs for the same size plow that we now have?
Yeah, it's a seven-foot-six plow is the spec we asked for, but a eight-foot-two may work. He may not want that because we follow sidewalks, too, and that's too much, probably. I'll have to ask him.
Anything else? Brenda?
This is something that was, the money was already in the budget.
Yes, we actually budgeted forty-seven thousand dollars to replace the appearance.
There's no other discussion? Would anyone wish to make a motion to approve the purchase of the vehicle and truck from Brickner's Park City at the bid of twenty-four thousand five twenty-five? Lynn?
I would move approval of the purchase of the two thousand four thousand tram from Brickner's Park City with the caveat that if Greg and Ryan and the superintendent approve the additional, additional plow, or the additional side increase of plow, that that add-on of two twenty would also include it.
Do I have a second to that motion? John?
I have a second, then.
Anything further, Lynn? John? Any other discussion or question? Seeing none, then we are voting to approve the purchase of the vehicle from Park City, Brickner's Park City. Thank you for staying welcome, Greg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. Thank you, Greg. Additional special ed time aid is on the pink paper that was under the green sheet we got last night. That's another additional item.
I was told it was bong, but it's a big...
Bong? Well, yeah, it was bong, so, okay. Although it's bong.
Basically, at the start of each school year, adjustments have to be made for the types of students that may transfer into the district or transfer out. And each year, adjustments have been made in the special ed staffing, and this year is, this is the first time we're bringing to you special education aides and other support people to the board. So this is to make you aware of the need for an additional special education aid. In the first paragraph, I've identified two situations in which, to me, justify the warrant and the need for this extra support. And I also inform you that in the last paragraph of that memo, I talk in terms of where we're starting this year in comparison to where we ended last year. And that information kind of dovetails in and kind of lets you know that as we go through the year, changes in the special education population really require some flexibility on the part of the district, in that some students require additional services that we don't have, and for them to attend school, we need this kind of supports in place. So I'm asking you to consider the addition of one special education aid at the high school.
Is this full-time, John?
Full-time.
And we have not hired anyone yet? You would be posting this position?
This job would be posted. Correct.
This is like I referenced before, we would come to you to create the position, and then, you know, and please know, though, that, and I hope this is okay with you, that this was a timing thing, that John came to me with this concern, and you can see it was after I had the board pack it out. If this would have happened, let's say tomorrow, the day after the board meeting, and I know we don't have, it's a month before we have the next board meeting, I would be asking him to at least post for it. We wouldn't come and, we would, so the next meeting, we'd probably be coming with two items on the agenda, one to create the position, and the second one to hire the person. So you still have the option to not do it, but I won't wait a month to create the position and then another month to try to, because we can't, we can't do that with the need for kids, okay? Just so there's an understanding with that.
It also looks like in this, John, that there's a possibility we might be receiving some money from the transfer of...
Correct. And I heard we're probably the one who could best explain transfer of service funds.
The transfer of service is something that we can apply for at the end of the school year, and it actually is an increase, it's a permanent increase. So you still have the option to, to not do it, but I, I won't wait a month to, to create the position and then another month to try to, because we can't, we can't do that with the need for kids. Okay? Just so there's an understanding with that.
It also looks like in this, John, that there's a possibility we might be receiving some monies from the transfer of...
Correct. Pat, are you probably the one who could best explain transfer of service funds?
The transfer of service is something that we can apply for at the end of the school year and it actually is an increase. It's a permanent increase on our revenue limit, um, the following year if there are costs for new, for incoming students that we incur during this current year.
And that's relative to special education students?
Special education, um, English language learners.
Thank you. Any other questions, uh, discussion of this, uh, position? Lynn?
Um, what percentage, John, of the funding comes from the federal government under special aid, under special ed monies? And then can you explain that percentage and what percentage comes out of our general fund?
The, we receive federal flow-through dollars, which are based upon our December first count. And that, right now, I heard this comment this morning that, um, even though the feds wanted it at forty percent, it's now considered to be at seventeen percent of the cost the district incurs for special education services. But that's flow-through and then there's those other types of funding we've talked about at other times. And, look, seventeen percent is what's considered, we're receiving.
But that's not seventeen percent on the dollar of what we spend. That is a pot of money that we get and then use. So it's a dollar amount that he starts working from. So when we say that it's going to be funded through flow-through dollars, we don't mean that eighty-three percent is general fund and seventeen percent is federal dollars. It's of that pot. Okay? Make sense? What I said?
Louise? I didn't get it. Seventeen percent of what?
Seventeen percent of the total cost of special education that the district bears is, and I haven't run this locally to Merrill, but that's what I heard today in a workshop, that seventeen percent is what the feds say they're now contributing to special education costs locally.
Do you, do you know how there's one percentage in the statute that the state will fund? And I don't remember off the top of my head.
It started at seventies, seventy percent.
I'm talking with state now.
A little over thirty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now.
And right now, that's what?
Thirty-one percent.
Yeah, but there's a higher, there's a higher one in the statute. It's supposed to be higher and, but what they funded is much lower and I'm just not remembering the percentages off the top of my head. So that, that's what he's talking about, the percentages, how they play with the amount of money available. And so even what they're supposed to be funding, they end up funding at a lesser mode. Or not what they're supposed to be, but they've said they wanted to fund.
I realize that.
Any other questions or discussion? Um, need for one extra special ed aide at the high school? There are none and we want to make a motion. Colin?
Yeah, one question. The, of, of course, we must have the money in the budget to make the hiring.
Yes.
So, all right. I will make that motion then to approve the hiring of the, uh, special ed aide.
Do I have a second to that motion? Kurt?
I'll second.
Any other comments, Colin? Kurt?
No.
Tom?
I, I just wanted to ask what you said. It's flow-through, but it's anticipated flow-through, not this next year?
No, and he said it's in December. You know how I, I use the third Friday count is critical and then I talk to you about the second Friday in January. In special ed, there's a December one count date that you look at the number of special ed students you have. And then there's a dollar amount you get based on that number. Okay?
So that's not, I thought I heard John say something about additional, or, or Pat say something about some kind of additional funding built in?
That's transfer of service?
Okay. So that's not what you're talking about?
No, those are two different pots of money. When we go back to, and in the end of October, last week in October, we will end up having a board meeting to finish our budget for the year. Because we have to do that before the first week in November and set the levy. And when I give you the revenue cap sheet again, we'll go back over transfer of service. Now, I, we've talked about it, but now you'll have a context for it, okay? And we'll go back then and, and it is going to go up compared to what we thought it was going to be at the annual meeting. So we'll bring that back around and, and talk to you more about it at that time and give you a context for it, okay?
Um, I guess that I would like to, and, and just, I mean, it's appropriate, I'm going to support this motion. But, um, at some point, we, I would like a special ed report, not just on numbers, but on, on, on the cost of service. And, because I think this is, every time we hear governor, our, uh, governor candidates, gubernatorial candidates debate, this is always something they bring up. They always talk about how they are going to fund special ed and then it somehow gets lost in the shuffle. And, and it's an important piece for, um, public education. So I think, um, you'll see it, uh, down at WASB because resolutions come out of it from our Wisconsin Association School Board with recommendations to, um, to the, our governing body here at the state. So, um, I guess I'd, I'd like that report. I think it's important to keep us grounded in that.
We'll build that into the budget, the setting of the budget at the end of October two. And then there's also a pot of money that the state superintendent announced last week. I think it's, if I remember right, it's a million and a half dollars.
Correct. In sports.
Towards a high-cost students, I believe it was thirty, anyone over thirty thousand dollars. There's a window of opportunity for school districts to apply for that money. And so John and I haven't even had a chance to talk about it yet, but it's, that has been something that's been on the table for years that the legislature has talked about. The state superintendent had, is using some discretionary dollars, uh, available and that was just set up last week and announced at the state superintendent's conference.
We have one student that will be applying.
Good. Any other discussion or questions on the motion? If not, then we would be voting to, um, add another special ed aide at the high school. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is board travel. And in the past, we have traditionally had a conference someone wanted to go to and we would bring it up and vote on whether or not that person could attend. Um, for efficiency's sake, and Sally's done this in the past and it worked well for her, um, we make one motion at a board meeting, this board meeting, to, um, allow or approve that board members can be reimbursed for attendance at in-state board development opportunities. So if we would vote to do this, then that would allow us the opportunity to attend, um, in-state conferences. Um, I don't believe anyone on this board has ever abused those opportunities and we try very hard to attend the ones that are local in Wasaw so that we don't incur lots of extra funding. Um, it would not include attendance at the national convention, which by policy, we can only send three board members to and that would be a special motion if anyone wishes to go to that. So is there any discussion on the, um, idea of having a blanket motion to reimburse members for attending to conventions? Tom?
This motion would allow as many board members as wish to attend any particular event.
That's correct. The way the motion is stated. I can throw something else on the table if you want.
I, I guess some rationale where I'm comfortable with that is there are some real key things that come up. It's important to have as many board members as possible to contend. There are others that, you know, you, we've even talked, had some of those discussions already. I told you that I don't think it's important if you're there because there are some things I know that's already going to be there or whatever and it isn't, you know, going to be as important. So we've weeded that out. We're doing that, you know, just naturally by our discussions. So, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Rather than set a number, I'd rather look at the quality of what we're doing.
And then I guess if we set a number and we wanted to send more people, then we'd have to bring it up at the board meeting, go through it again. So as I said, I think I don't believe anybody on this board has traditionally overextended that. Lynn?
Um, I move approval.
Where is the wording?
Do you want that, I mean, seventeen, do you have that?
Right in the middle of the paragraph.
I move approval that school board members have the authority to be reimbursed for the cost for attendance at in-state board development opportunities.
Do I have a second to that motion? Louise?
I would second that.
Do we have any discussion? Lynn?
No, other than I really view this, um, over eight years of being on the board as my professional development. And I think it's an incredible opportunity to, to learn more about federal and state law and, um, I guess, so you can be the best board member for students that has an elective official that you can be. If, if time allows you to go.
Louise?
Um, I agree with what, what Lynn, Lynn said. There's so many things to know about being on the board and being able to go to those meetings and talk to the people from other school districts is as valuable many times as the programs themselves. And, um, I'm very comfortable with this motion because nobody on our board, even when we've had it available to everybody, we might end up with two or three people who are able to go. So, um, I would like to encourage, and I think that people do go when they can, but, um, some of them are scheduled so that it's just not an, an opportunity for anybody. Hopefully though, as we, as we continue, um, we can share more of what we learned. That, that's always been a problem of, of finding the time to share, um, what we learned with everybody else.
John?
Uh, just amend the motion to state that's annual or July, June thirty, and that would get the state.
That would cover the oh-three, oh-four? For the, the fiscal year?
The way that I see it fitting is after the annual meeting and the direction that's been given because of setting board salaries and da-da-da-da-da-da. That's how it fits and then we would do it annually. That's why it's set up that would be...
Set annually?
And it would be on our board calendar, however.
Are you comfortable with that or would you still like to amend the motion?
I think the motion needs to, yeah, either the word annual or date.
Okay. Friendly amendment, Lynn? Okay. Where would you want to put that, John? Would you kind of read it with your, how would you state it?
I would just put it at four of the two thousand three, two thousand four, two thousand four.
Okay. Second, comfortable with that?
What happens in the summer?
I guess we'd have to, we'd have to go through, probably we'd have to go through...
We need to go through the end of the summer.
To the annual meeting, actually. I think that would be appropriate because of the annual meeting is when we would get the authority to continue this.
It's outside.
So it wouldn't be the squeaker. So should we say through the annual meeting for oh-four? That they're comfortable with that? Any other discussion? Carrie?
Are, you're still going to update though when things come up because sometimes you get information that maybe we don't...
Oh, sure. We're definitely still going to share information and pass it around. It's just that we don't need to take the board time to, to make a motion to prove people attending it. And if you get it in the mail and you know you want to go, then you can just go ahead and call Sally or, um, her man and make the reservation. Tom?
As we do that, it would be helpful to know, I guess, who is planning to attend. In the sense that if there are several people going, perhaps we might say, then I won't, as opposed to no one's going and it's information. So if you could update us on that as well, I think that's helpful.
So we'll share.
And making that decision on every one of them.
So we'll share information about who's attending.
Except with this one.
Any other discussion? There is none? Oh, column.
On the same line, I guess we could just have a calendar with all the events on it for the year as they pop up, put it on there and...
Some unique.
You're going to go put your name on there and, yeah, it's right up on here.
We could try that. Or we could just put it on the little, maybe a little calendar that they just, um, and we'll be for it because that used to be done. And we should know. But we'll find a way to do it. Any other discussion? There is none and we will be voting on the motion to allow board members to attend in-state board development opportunities through the annual meeting in oh-four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. Down to the good part, donations.
On, starting on page ninety, um, I shared a, uh, new donation format administratively that they felt comfortable with. So hopefully you do, that makes it succinct and right there and who's, who's involved in what, uh, the donation is. So for Washington PTO, a donation of six hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents for supplies, um, to, or, let me get this right. Uh, it's a Washington PTO to the Washington School in the amount of six hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Uh, Merrill Teachers Association donating a check worth hundred and sixty-three dollars to the Little Learners Head Start. Um, the, and then there's an attached list of, uh, what has individuals, a Wendor family that gave in sir Wendor, the Wendor Destruction, Grace Wendor, um, Ken DeMosh, Greg Metz, and Time River PTO all contributed to the building of the Pavilion at Time River. I recommend your approval.
I think, I don't know if you mentioned that the donations for that pavilion were about thirty-five hundred dollars worth of donations.
Thank you.
Which is a building. Do I have a motion to approve the donations that we are receiving? Karen?
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second? Brenda?
Second.
Any other discussion carries?
Just a big thank you again.
Brenda?
It's wonderful to have people donating their time and materials.
Any other discussion or comments on the donation? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you. That motion carries. Thanks, Debbie. Traditionally, the superintendent sent a letter, thanks to everyone. I assume you will continue that. And thank you for the kind of succinct format that puts all the donations together in a nice concise way, so makes them easy to read. Um, moving on to report of committees. Um, ad hoc finance committee did meet on September tenth at seven PM in the district office. Uh, the main focus of that meeting was to introduce Sally to the ad hoc budget committee. Um, it was a tough night to pull people together, so we had about half the committee present, um, and half not. But, um, Sally did talk a little bit about what we'd like to do in the district. Um, we discussed the annual meeting and asked for comments on how the people thought the annual meeting went and how that format was. And all of those comments were very positive. And I think in the discussion, there was some give and take about what, uh, what some of the community members were interested in and some of the work we had done on the committee previous to, um, Dr., or Mr. Harrington leading. And, um, Sally indicated that we really, again, are focusing on enhancing the budget relative to student achievement and at-risk and remediation and trying to tie district goals to, um, to the budget and also looking at data collection, which they also appreciated. We did not set another time for that meeting. There were not enough members in attendance to pick a good date. So, um, Dr. Sernstrom's still working with me and looking at some direction for this committee as she looks at the framework that she's developed in the packet on how we might use that group as well to, uh, to help us. Any other comments on it? Any other questions on that? Um, Lynn, would you like to speak briefly about the public relations?
Yes, we had a brief meeting on September tenth and, um, talked about, uh, questions that you saw in the packet tonight and questions that we would be asking the public. Again, this will add to the process of helping with budgets. But also, um, talked about attending with Sally, um, municipal meetings at townships and city meetings, um, here in town. And, um, Sally's going to be working with those officials to set up that calendar. So not only will your committee go to those, uh, individuals who are committed, but also we may ask additional board members to come with us. Uh, also, um, we will be using those budget books that Sally put together for the annual meeting and those will be used as kind of grounding us in information. We also talked about, again, um, utilizing local newspapers, local media to communicate the good news of public education. And also talked about, um, looking at and kind of, um, making sure that the process for media releases is, is similar and consistent throughout the district. So we did not set another meeting time because we would be attending these municipal meetings once we get that scheduled.
Sure.
We have a...
We have a draft of the municipal meetings. And so I think with as many people that need to sign up, maybe the best way is, Anne will give you copies tonight before you leave. And if you could fill it in for your availability on these nights. And then we'll get back to you as we sift and sort. You know, so just give us all of your availability, and then we'll see where we are and how many nights we have in that. There are some that, there will be multiple on the same nights, we just have to balance if we can get to both and whatever. But give us a starting point. Okay?
Great. Anything else, or any questions for Lynn?
Well, for the other committee members.
Anyone else? Nope. Care to share? On the PR committee?
Oh, I guess just, you mentioned it, and there are going to be many meetings, so hopefully, it sounds like we'll need as much participation as we can get it. But October, November, basically, that's where they're kind of clustered, right?
We have fourteen, fourteen, I believe, that is municipalities, so.
So if we can all take just a couple, we can do them all pretty well.
And some of those municipalities are incredibly small, so we don't all have to attend the one over towards Anago, you know?
If we have a quorum, then I will post it that a possible quorum is, you know, going to be there and whatever. If it's going to be less than a quorum, it won't be opposed to be, you know. So that's where I need the numbers and that, so, and then we can figure out rides and etc.
All right. No other questions? We can move on to future meetings. The next regular board meeting will be October twenty-second at seven PM in the boardroom. Agenda items, now we're traditionally working off the calendar that we have established, that Sally put together and that we also looked at. But if anyone else has additional items that they're interested in, get ahold of me or Sally. Kurt?
Could I, I just, I was always kind of a stickler for the building construction class. And I know they moved the bill, or the home, this, two weekends ago. And I was just wondering if maybe you could throw a little.
Update.
Your information. This is what it's sold for.
Okay, update on the house?
That'd be great.
Good idea. Anyone else? Anybody that can make it tomorrow at eight fifteen is welcome to join us for the radio. It's always a good time, please. I don't know who we'll have, because Joe Whitaker is retired.
Daytime.
Daytime. So.
Just playing that.
I'm playing a call.
You can come. Are you coming, come?
You'll be there.
You can make it, absolutely.
Okay, I'll be there.
We initiated you last time, this time you have to talk.
So you can talk.
Before we, I would invite Lynn and.
Brandon.
Brandon. I got his last name, weren't I? To give us a report on what's coming and wanting to hear how it goes and everything, you know, how the cost did and that kind of thing. Thank you.
Seeing nothing else then, we've got radio. I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five per N one, sub-paragraph C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and e-deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. More specifically, we will be continuing our closed session and discussing the superintendent's evaluation. Do I have a motion to adjourn into closed session after five-minute recess, Kurt?
So will.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
May I have a second for them?
Colin?
Colin.
Carrie Taylor? Aye. Colin Niemeyer?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
John Crowe?
Aye.
Randy Mema?
Aye.
Kurt Eckers?
Aye.
Emma?
Aye.
Ray Louis Schatz?
Aye.
Lynn Zentner?
Aye.
Motion carries.